All right, good evening, everybody. Do a quick roll call, and we are missing our mayor tonight, so I'm going to fill in, see if I can fill those shoes. So at this time, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and at this time, we'd also stand up and join us if you can for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to start tonight off with a presentation and a proclamation for the National Arts and Humanities Month, wear my glasses, for Act One Theater and their 30-year anniversary. If I could have you folks come up, we'd love to do this. One, I want to point out, is Stu, and Stu and I were along with John Hypes in the Leadership North Fulton class of 2000. Twenty-five years, getting up there. You look better than I do. All right. Now, do you want to say a few words before I get started?
I thank the city council for having this proclamation, having us up here, especially in Arts and Humanities Month, and thank Kim Zane for all of her support of Act One over the years in the city with our MOUs. I also just want to point out an important guest, Robin Thornett. Standing beside me is the daughter of the founder of Act One, who unfortunately was taken away from us too soon. And I also want to point out Virginia Mann to my left, and Murray Mann, her husband, was the 30-year AV man who recently passed away, so we have some really important founding members of Act One here tonight.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, and by the White House and Congress for more than two decades. And whereas the nonprofit and for-profit arts and humanities industries work to promote, protect, and support the growth of culture and heritage within the city of Alpharetta, and whereas this year marks the 30th anniversary of the founding of Act One Theater, which was first created by the Alpharetta Presbyterian Church as a theater ministry and founded by Maria Thornett in 1995. And whereas Act One Theater is an all-volunteer outreach and program of Alpharetta Presbyterian Church that produces high-quality, entertaining theatrical experiences, drama education, and it's the longest continuously operating community theater in Alpharetta, with costs, crews, and audiences coming from all over the metro Atlanta area to create and enjoy production each year. And whereas Act One Theater has partnered with the city for eight years to produce additional shows outside its main stage, including Shakespeare and Will's Park, and other performances and events in the Alpharetta Arts Center, Brook Street Park, and has also supported downtown Alpharetta festivals. Act One Theater and the city work together to find a home for the theater's costume inventory, and the city also connects other community theaters with Act One Theater to loan its costumes when needed. And whereas this year, the Act One Theater and Alpharetta Presbyterian Church supported and funded the establishment of a new independent community theater company, Arcadia Theater, which performs at the city's newest venue, the Spotlight Stage, and other places around town. Now therefore, we, the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, do hereby declare October 2025 as Arts and Humanities Month, and recognize and celebrate the 30-year contribution of Act One Theater and its support by the Alpharetta Presbyterian Church. We encourage all members of the community to celebrate, promote, support, and participate in the arts and culture throughout the city of Alpharetta. So proclaim this sixth day of October 2025 by the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia.
That's really amazing. Thank you so much. This is amazing. This means so much to us. I don't know if you know this, but Act One, the ACT part of it, stands for Alpharetta Christian Theater, so we have carried Alpharetta with us from the very first day. So thank you so much for your support over all of these years, and going forward, we're going to make some great art for you guys.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Another round of applause. Want to get in, everybody get in and get a picture? Moving on, our next order of business tonight's a work session, and this item is coming up for city council to review and discuss, the Alpha Loop Bridge mural and Rainwater Drive, so sticking with the arts for a little bit longer. Director Rogers?
Morgan, if you wouldn't mind to turn your mic on.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council. It's always a pleasure to be with you tonight. We are here to review and for discussion of the proposed Alpha Loop Bridge mural number three along the Alpha Loop, known as the Rainwater Location. This application is coming from Arts Alpharetta on behalf of the city and the Alpha Loop Foundation. Arts Alpharetta raised money for this mural and worked with the foundation and the city. We put out a call to the artist. That artist was selected, an artist named Serenity Kraus, and she painted, she is painted, is going to paint a neon guarding. This is what, if you look on your screen, that's what it looks like imposed on the bridge there is what we call the Rainwater Location. It is, I'll let it speak for itself. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Doing good so far.
Okay, thank you. I think we've got direction that we need for the workshop, so thank you very much.
Really, thank you, Morgan. Looks great, Morgan. Really does. Next item tonight is our consent agenda. Council's had a chance to review, and is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion from Councilman Mitchell, a second from Councilman Brady.
Mayor Protem, could we ask for a public comment before y'all take a vote on this item?
Didn't know we ever took public comment on this, but we will ask anybody in public comment. Okay. So I've got a first, and I got a second. People want to go ahead and vote accordingly? And it does pass. Next item on your list has been deferred, or actually withdrawn, that is the V-25-23 Timothy V.A.-145 Pebble Trail. That has been withdrawn and will not be heard this evening, so if anybody's here in regards to that one, it is gone. Next up, looks like Pete's on deck, invitation to bid 26-004 Traffic Signal Upgrade at Kimball Bridge Road and North Winds Parkway. Take it away, Pete.
Yes, Mayor Protem. Council members, before you know it, is the mast arm replacement of the guy wires that are currently, or string pole wires that are currently at the intersection of North Winds and Kimball Bridge Road. We had Moffett Nickel perform a design, went out to bid, had four firms come in with a low bid GTG traffic signals at $237,965. It is within the budget that was allocated within the FY '26 budget. Should be noted that it's a significant lead time for these mast arms. They're all custom fabricated, custom designed per this intersection, so we're looking at a 27-week lead time, and then two months to get the work done, once the poles are delivered.
Thank you. Any questions for Pete? No questions for Pete, thank you, Pete. Any public comments for or against the mast arm at that intersection? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote.
Mayor Protem, move to approve the award of contract for ITB 26-04, the GTG traffic signals for the complete upgrade of the existing traffic signal to mast arms at the intersection of Kimball Bridge Road and North Winds Parkway, in the amount not to exceed $237,965, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a first from Councilman Dorito, and a second from Councilman Brady. Any discussion? At this time, I'd ask everybody to vote accordingly. And it passes.
Thank you.
Next item up, Pete, got the contract amendment and purchase approval for stormwater repair, contract 24-122, and fiscal year 2026, task order number one.
Yes, CSTE is our on-call construction firm for stormwater repairs and concrete work associated throughout the city. The first item of the amendment to the contract is, it was omitted that in the contract for us to be a multi-year contract, so we're going to ask to amend that. It went out as an RFP, that would be a one-year contract with four one-year renewals, all in the agenda item, to award CSTE in that manner. Unfortunately, it did not make the contract. We had an oversight in that and reviewing the contract. On top of that, then, we're asking for $500,000 to do repairs throughout the city and stormwater infrastructure, work taking place in Tuxworth, subdivision, Rainwater Drive, and our city detention ponds, to name a few of those areas. So we're basically using the half million dollars to go towards all these individual task orders.
Anybody have any questions for Pete? Seeing no questions, any public comments for or against this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve an amendment to contract number 24-122, Stormwater Repair Unit Price Contract to CSTE Inc., and allocate $500,000 to complete multiple stormwater infrastructure maintenance repairs for fiscal year 2026, task order one, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a first from Councilman Dorito, a second from Councilman Hypes. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote.
Thank you.
The next item, item C, Purchase Approval Police Taser Replacements, was deferred by staff earlier today, and I believe is planned to be heard in two weeks, but stay tuned, we'll let you know. That moves us on to...
Two meetings, three weeks.
Huh? Three weeks?
Yes, two meetings, three weeks.
Okay. Everybody got that? Next up, Chief Trent, Purchase Approval Operational Readiness for Police Officers Training.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council, for your consideration, we are asking for approval of the Operational Readiness for Police Officers Training. This is specifically, it's from the opioid settlement that Georgia is a part of, which the city has received approximately $80,000 of. This is online training for all police officers in the department. It's about four hours, and it's mostly around safety of handling especially fentanyl right now. As you're aware, we just saw last week, there was a 13 pounds of fentanyl seized at the airport on a flight in a suitcase. It's an insane amount, probably could have killed everyone in the airport. So what we're seeing is a lot more of this, and the dangers to public safety in just handling fentanyl, being aware, that's the focus of this training, and this is an extra-budgetary thing. This is from the opioid settlement, so it doesn't come out of the city's revenue.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the chief? Seeing no questions, I'll ask for any public comment for or against. Thank you, chief. All right, so this time, I'll call for a vote.
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to...
We'll do a motion first, then we'll do a vote.
Is there something to be read?
I jumped ahead of you. Proceed.
Make a motion to council approve the purchase of operational readiness for police officers, practical strategies for addressing opioid use disorder, and co-occurring conditions training program through the University of North Georgia, in an amount not to exceed $59,400, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion from Councilman Hypes, a second one from Councilman Brady. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Dorito.
I just want to say, this is a great use of these funds from the opioid settlement for protecting our police officers with the fentanyl crisis going on in our country. This is an excellent use of these funds, so I just want to compliment the chief for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'll call for a vote. All right, I'll vote too. And it passes. Thank you. Next up is the resolution, True North 400 Community Improvement District Expansion. Ms. Sswan?
A resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia consenting to the expansion of the True North 400 Community Improvement District.
Thank you. Chris, you want to update everybody?
Yeah, this will be a very quick staff presentation. So we were approached by the, by True North 400 that wants to expand the boundary of the CID. It expands, the proposal expansion is in Alpharetta and Roswell. Of the parcels in Alpharetta, there are four, and they're all consenting parcels, meaning the people that are being brought into the CID have asked to be brought into the CID. There was that concern about our four parcels that amounted to one city park downtown. That has since been removed. It took a little while to go back to the, to Mr. Ferdinand to get a new certificate, but that's what's included in your packet. We put a better map in there, hopefully, so that you could see parcel by parcel more clear than you could the first time through, but essentially, this just consents to the four parcels that want to be a part of the CID. It allows them in. Happy to take any questions. Kristen is here as well, if you have any questions for her.
Kristen, you want to come talk to us?
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem and council, good evening. We really appreciate you all taking this under consideration tonight. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. I will say, Alpharetta's always been a wonderful partner, and we're just hoping to strengthen that partnership going forward. But yes, like Chris said, there are five, there are actually five parcels, AT&amp;T is two, technically two parcels, but four owners, that have consented to join the CID, and of course, we come to y'all to ask y'all to allow that to take place. So again, happy to answer any questions you all have, and again, thank you for having us tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Kristen? We've been talking about it for a while, so I think everybody's pretty much up to speed. We appreciate your patience with this, and continue to do a great job over there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, with that, any public comment for or against said item? I see none. Since I see none, I'll go ahead and ask for a vote. A motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, make a motion that council adopt the resolution consenting to the expansion of the True North 400 Community Improvement District as referenced by city council.
Second?
City attorney.
I have a motion by Councilman Hypes, a second by Councilman Dorito. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Councilman Hype?
Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation for what True North is doing. You know, one of my favorite things in the city is our trail system, both the Greenway and the Alpha Loop, and you guys have really leaned into that and been a great partner with us, and it really sets our city apart. And don't get too many opportunities to have Kristen right here in front of us in the CID, but you know, thank you for all that you're doing, because it's just wonderful. We're so much further along with the Alpha Loop than I thought we would be in the last six or seven years, and couldn't have made it happen without what you guys are helping us with, so thank you.
Anybody else? Up and down the line? Okay. We don't have comments, I'll go ahead and ask for a vote. Called for a vote? There we go. Thank you. And it does pass. Thank you, everybody that worked on that. That was a great project. All right, let's go to any public comment cards.
We do have one. Peter Frederick, if you wouldn't mind to come forward. Just as a friendly reminder, please state your name and address for the record.
And we hold these to three minutes.
3400 Kimball Road, my name is Peter Frederick. Honorable mayor and members of the council, it is a matter of serious concern and one that raises grave questions about the discretion exercised by the city's elected officials that Alpharetta has repeatedly engaged with the HSS, an organization which the city ought to be showing the door rather than giving the time of day. The HSS, which maintains two cells in Alpharetta, is a global outfit which is described by Syracuse University professor Dr. Premakuri and as the American branch of the RSS. Dr. Evian Leidig, an associate fellow at the International Center for Counterterrorism, identifies the RSS as a paramilitary Hindu nationalist organization which advocates for an ethno-nationalist Hindu state. Reports from Human Rights Watch not only link the RSS to violence against Indian minorities, but also note that it has collaborated with Indian police in its bloodshed. And thus, it is outrageous that not only has the mayor issued proclamations honoring the HSS, but that the Alpharetta Police Department has also hosted the group for photo ops. Academic experts have shed considerable light on the nature and connections of the HSS. Santa Clara University professor Rohit Chopra and Rutgers University professor Dr. Adri Truschk both explained that the HSS is organizationally tied to the RSS and was established to extend the RSS's ideology abroad. Professor Chopra observes that the HSS uses city proclamations to promote itself and its politics, while Dr. Trusch states that the HSS promotes a far-right ideology of violence, hate, and oppression of religious minorities in India, and wants to whitewash its image as a cover for its nefarious activities. Notably, several municipalities across multiple states have revisited and following deeper examination of the HSS's affiliations and ideological underpinnings, ultimately rescinded proclamations which they had previously awarded to the outfit. Those ideological underpinnings are beyond disturbing. For instance, Severa, a research collective states, Hindu supremacists like the HSS have drawn inspiration from American and European fascism. Emes Galvarcar, the long-serving supreme leader of the RSS in India, expressed his open admiration for Nazi Germany as a model worthy of emulation. One of Galvarcar's inspirations, Vidi Savarkar explicitly invoked the status of black Americans in the 1930s while describing his desired positioning of Muslims in India. Furthermore, a report from Rutgers University specifically warns that groups like the HSS undermine American pluralism and spread hate against Muslims, Sikhs, and other minority groups within American society. When the city of Alpharetta interacts with the HSS, it, even if unintentionally, provides a platform to a hateful ideology. In light of this evidence and the views of many scholars, I urgently urge the city of Alpharetta to reconsider its associations and proclamations extended to the HSS. Aligning civic recognition with organizations tied to extremist ideologies is incompatible with the city's stated commitment to inclusion, diversity, and human rights. And I have for every member of the council a information packet about the HSS and its ideology. Thank you.
Those are all of the cards we've received this evening, but if there's anyone else that would like to speak.
Great, thank you. Any reports? Mr. Hypes?
We do have, I think, one...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...person making their way down front. And just as a friendly reminder, if you would just state your first and last name and address for the record, please.
Apologies for being late. My name is Violet Purcell, and my address is 7160 Harbor Landing. As you can see, I am a student at Chattahoochee High School, but I do live in Winward, which is in Alpharetta. I am part of the Student Leadership North Committee within, I guess, the general area. They have recently branched out to Alpharetta, and I'm here to talk to all of you, since I am an SOS ambassador, a Secretary of State ambassador. Recently, we have gone on endeavors which include hosting a city council debate for the Johns Creek City Council debate. I had the honor of being the emcee for the debate, which went swimmingly, it went amazing. And, but, some of my companions and other classmates had some concerns about traffic within the Johns Creek and Alpharetta area, and they thought that it would be wonderful for me to come bring my concerns. A lot of them are very concerned as they bike to school, or they have, I have my neighbor who, he e-bikes to school every single day, and due to the construction that is constantly on the road, specifically the one leading up to Alpharetta High School, with the sidewalks constantly closed, and nothing has gotten done seemingly, there's constant change, and he doesn't know if he's able to get to school via his only way to get to school. He doesn't have a car. He only has his e-bike, which it's, at that point, it's not safe to be able to get to school. It's not sustainable. Having this constant construction with no plans clear to the public, that students and other groups who don't really know how to navigate the complex system of, say, the city council website, they just don't know, like, where to find this information about the change in construction plans. They don't know where to find these things. It's so complicated. So I would like to propose that we put more ideas and more, our plans for the construction and things that are happening on our sidewalks, our roads, because currently, even the Greenway path that starts around the YMCA and goes all the way to Roswell, is intercepted by that construction, and it is causing a lot of bikers, and I've, I personally biked that Greenway path. It's causing a lot of bikers some distress and concern, because they don't know if, where to go from there. They don't know how to get back to their car from there, because they start somewhere else, and then someone says, "Oh, I'll go pick you up past the Alpharetta, past this road." And then they don't, they can't get to the, they can't get to their destination, and it's quite, it's just dangerous for everybody involved, and I know people of all age groups are deeply concerned. I actually put up a poll today and said, "I'm coming here to come speak to all of you." What, and I put up a poll on my Instagram, followed by about 600 students who go, live in Alpharetta and Johns Creek, and they said their major concern, I said, "What is your major concern? Unemployment, construction, on the roads, youth..." This was ranked above youth mental health concerns. Students are the most concerned about the construction and the impact that this is having on their transportation and their safety. So I urge all of you to make the transportation plans and the construction plans on the roads very clear to students, so that they're, they are able to get to school safely, and that they're able to get to school on time, which is a whole other issue that I don't think we all understand. They're all being, like, hindered every day. Every day, I have friends who are late to school. I have friends who go to Alpharetta who are late to school, and they live in Winward, which, if you know where Winward is, it is a five-minute drive from school. Like, it's so astonishing that they have to be late to school because of this construction, because of this mismanaged. I was personally driving my brother to school the other day, and there is, was no flagger. It was just a random person driving through the car. There was no plan to it. So I propose that the construction plans have better management, there's more, the ideas are posted clearly, so that you don't have to go digging for these plans, that people like me, the common people, are able to find. It's just so challenging. We need to place these on the website clearly and stated, and we need to make sure the plans are much more concise, so that people are not getting injured, people are not late to school, and it's not a hindrance. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I know this is not a two-way conversation, but I do want to urge you to contact the city clerk's office and have a follow-up dis- clerk's office and have a follow-up discussion, so, so we can help, you know, address your, you and 600 followers' concerns, and probably a lot more people out there. So we understand, a lot of us feel the same pain trying to traverse through the city. It's kind of a big people problem, and we need to work on that, so thank you. All right, now reports. Councilman Hypes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have two reports. My first report is, I want to brag on the city's website that we just launched and invested a lot of money into and made it very intuitive. And one of the really peculiar and neat functions about the city's website is, on the bottom of the first page, the splash page in the lower right corner, is something called City Projects. And when you click on City Projects, you'll find a map with flags of all the ongoing road projects going on in the city of Alpharetta, and will tell you exactly where they are in terms of the progress of construction, how much money's been spent, how much money remains. And it's, it's a, it's a great tool for the residents, and for anybody listening out there, I would urge them to go check the first page of the website, bottom of the page, lower right corner, City Projects, to keep abreast. And you can actually get email updates by subscribe to progress for any of the projects you're interested in following, such as Webb Bridge Road and others. My second report is, this weekend, we have Wire and Wood. And, you know, personally, one of my all-time favorite Alpharetta events, but starting Friday evening at 6 o'clock, and then Saturday afternoon at noon, we'll have stages throughout downtown. We have some just wonderful bands coming in, some well-known bands and some great performers, and it's a great family event, it's a great music event, it's a great Alpharetta event. So I hope you will spread the word and turn out for Wire and Wood.
Anyone else? Councilman Dorito.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I'm going to use my report time to respond to our resident that came up. I didn't catch your name, but I'll get it off the clerk later on. I'd love to meet with you one day and just discuss your really nice presentation, and the reason why I'm going to use my report time for this, because this is an important issue. I'm, I'm currently in the middle of a reelection campaign, as you probably know, and I did take a poll through my campaign about two weeks ago, and the top two issues in the city, not just with the youth, but with the all-city residents, was growth and traffic. So it is an area that we can improve communication on, educate people. I think you'd be quite surprised as to how much information is out there, and it's really trying to figure out what conduits can we improve feeding this information to, such as your, the student body that follows you and that sort of thing. And the other thing I'll just say is, I love when young residents come up here. You're obviously a very articulate speaker, and you have a great future, I could tell just by the way you presented this evening. And, you know, we're here as representatives for you and everybody else in the city, and we're not perfect. We, we do our best with the skill sets that God's given each of us up here, and it's people like yourself that come out of their way to talk to us, that bring these things to our attention, and I will guarantee you, this city council will react to your comments this evening in a very positive way, because it's great constructive criticism as to improving communications with our community, as well as, you know, an opportunity, I see, to get our youth much more involved with the government here in Alpharetta, so that we're addressing your issues and your fellow students' issues, who frankly can, can lead us in, in some really good directions going forward, and some of the things we need to accomplish as the city continues to grow. So thank you for coming up and expressing your concerns, and well-articulated and well-received, and look forward to hopefully, when you have some time, getting together with you and any other students that might want to talk about transportation in the city. I have a whole bunch of information, since I'm the liaison to Public Works, and our Public Works director would probably even join me at that meeting to kind of explain to you what we're doing with all these road projects. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Dorito. Anybody else? All right, well, I am informed that we do have an executive session this evening. It should be short and sweet, so I will need a motion and a vote to recess into executive session.
Motion to...
Yeah. Take your time.
A motion to recess into executive session, and I hope it is swimmingly sweet.
Yes.
Short.
Second.
We've got a, first by Councilman...
While you're voting...
Councilman Mitchell, second by Councilman Brady.
And while you're voting, I'll just let you know that the topic is pending litigation, and we know what you're going to say, we just have to hear you say it, so it's going to be that short.
All right, well, let's vote to go say it. Mr. Hypes, you want to vote?
Well, there you go.
Before you move on, as being part of the SOS ambassadors, I am part of a competition that is trying to gain points for better engagement, and just as proof that I'm here, I kind of need a picture with all of y'all. If you can talk to Brad Raffensperger. I don't care.
I'm going to stay right here.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Motion to reconvene.
I got a motion by Councilman Mitchell and a second by Councilman Brady. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote accordingly. If anybody wants to stay, you can stay. And it passes. Sure. We've got a first from Councilman Dorito, a second from Councilman Brady. Any discussion? All those in favor? Man, we real...
You notice that?
Has anyone noticed when the mayor's not here that the heat is up there?